Chancet. Safa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay. Yor.
Here.
Saran.
Here.
Vogel Singer. We have eleven in attendance.
Second item is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone. We are recording this for BATV tonight. It's important that everyone can hear us home. Item number three, items to remove, edit, or change. Do you have any?
Yes, we would like to add an executive session this evening.
Hang on under item fifteen A then. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'm.
Move.
I can.
Motion in a second.
Good question. What is the executive session for?
Uh, the executive session is for litigation.
Okay.
Thanks, Alan.
We need to make sure that we state that.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. A clerk, please call the room.
Beck.
Hi.
Chancet.
Hi.
Safa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay. Yor.
Hi.
Saran.
Hi.
Vogel Singer. Miller.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Motion approved, eleven zero.
Hey, Dan. Point of order. Sure. Do we still have to do roll call now that we're, I mean, I know Alan's revoked, but we were doing roll call because of the split folks. I think we can just do.
So we actually have to do a roll call to show that we have the quorum present. You just have to.
No, what I'm saying for each vote.
For voting.
For voting. I don't think we have to do it anymore.
That's correct. We can do voice votes now because it's no longer a hybrid meeting.
Before, before color, we did roll call.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, it's not roll call. It's when you're doing the vote, but you can say all in favor, opposed, and you can note who voted.
It's been so long.
Get out of here before eleven.
Trying to save some time.
I'm okay with that. Thank you.
I used to change, Mark.
Okay. Um, okay. So we're over here. Then I, I was to matters from the public. Do we have anyone here to address anything that's not listed currently on our agenda? Night's consent agenda, item number five. Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-two dash R, authorizing execution of a contract for the twenty twenty-three street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement program with Builders Paving LLC in the amount of one million nine hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars. Resilience twenty-three dash seventy-three dash R, adopting I dot resolution to appropriate one point six million from MFT fund for the twenty twenty-three street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement program. Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six dash R approval of municipal sign easement with Homestead Inc. Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-one dash R, approving a resolution accepting public improvements at bar one expansion. Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-eight dash R approving a plant of easement at eight thirty Blaine Street. And resolution twenty-three dash seventy-four dash R approved the final plan of the Winding Creek Phase Two subdivision Mill Street at Freeland Course. That's Pulley Homes LLC is the applicant. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read. Motion in a second. Any additional discussion on the items on our consent agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Oh, really good.
You both say, did you say I?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure for this, I come. Question carry twelve zero.
Excellent. It is after seven oh five. So I would move to item number six. This is a public hearing for the annexation agreement for the property at two south, two fourteen Hart Road.
Uh, this and the companion item for the ordinance are for an annexation grant for two S two fourteen South Hart Road. This is property that is across the street from properties we've annexed recently. This is a very similar agreement to those because it has some unusual conditions in it. It is a larger parcel than most of the ones in that area that we've been working on towards annexation. The agreement calls for several provisions, including allowance for the animals that are existing on the property. They have horses and ducks and some other things that are on there as well as a horse ring and a, and a stable that are on the property. So they would like to continue to do that because those are allowed under the county regulations, but they just wanted to guarantee it as part of the annexation agreement. Uh, it also does require them to dedicate forty feet from the center line for Hart Road at a future time when we make the request to do so. And it also, as, as we have had with other utilities, doesn't require them to connect to utilities until their systems fail. The wells or septic, you know, become defective and they need to replace them. We have utilities that are located in that area, so they would have the ability to connect into those in the future.
And the, uh, has the applicant?
I don't believe they're here tonight, but I, I have had conversations with their attorney and, you know, they her, she's done several of these agreements also, so she's, she's aware of the meeting, so.
Okay, very good.
Couple of questions, Dan.
Yes, sir.
So they're amenable to the agreement as, as written.
Correct.
And then what if, if they were to sell it, what kicks in to a new owner immediately?
It would be, it would be continual to the, to the new owner because it's in an annexation agreement. So, so the new owners would be able to continue to do the same types of things during the twenty year term of the agreement.
Yeah, I do see they all signed the agreement already, so.
And subsequent, uh, once this is done, we're, we're planning to have the voluntary. We've received about, um, I think eleven voluntary petitions from this area from our solicitations. So those will be coming in June, which includes this property.
I know we had some contentious, uh, of, of these properties with property owners that didn't want to be. I'm curious if any of the changes that you instituted are proving to be effective.
Um, they're letting them know.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's changing their opinions of things, but you know, they're, they're aware of what, what the things are and, and you know, what the, you know, benefits are for annexation. And I've had, you know, extensive conversations with, you know, quite a few of the property owners in that area. So once we're done with the voluntary ones, I anticipate we'll be moving ahead with the involuntary ones at, at some point in the not too distant future.
The communication sheet that we hand out is slick and glossy and pretty to look at and easy to read.
It's in large print and it's, it's easy to read. It has everything as a bullet point and, you know, it has, has the information that, you know, we've, we've tried to convey to them about the benefits, but not everybody feels that it does benefit them, so.
It's definitely progress. It's out in the right direction. So that's cool. Okay.
Other question before we make a motion that like in the past, we've reviewed, uh, the islands and you've mapped them out. Um, can we get a visual of that or is it accessible and?
It's, if you look at the current zoning map that's online, that'll show you kind of the, the white areas that are left. We really have only a few areas left. So this is one of the areas. We have the area of South Wagner Road and, and South Redant Road. We have the area of Sunset and Gizi. And then the last one is the area, uh, there's a couple of properties on Deer Path Road, and that's it. Yeah, we're almost done.
Substantial progress. Congratulations. Any additional questions? If not, then I would, uh, move to close a public hearing.
I can.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, any, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Opposed? Eyes have it. Yeah, that does feel good. Okay, sounds good. Moving on. To item number seven, this is ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen, authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement for that property at two south, two fourteen Hart Road.
They might have accepted, just approves the annexation agreement. It does require two thirds majority of the council.
For the remainder, uh, so moved and, yeah, second. Motion in a second. Any additional discussion regarding this property? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Uh, eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number H. There's a presentation regarding, uh, Water Street Studios. It's a proposal for a painting. Uh, it's a mural on the city-owned property that's a deck on North River Street.
We have a picture of it or no?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Good evening, citizen.
Sorry about that. Do you guys want to go ahead and, and jump in while I get that up there?
Okay. Well, um, I'm Bonnie Baumgruner, and I think you guys recognize who's right next to me. But we are here on behalf of Water Street Studios. We are starting up a new committee called the Batavia Public Art Initiative. Bill and I will be chairing the committee and we have several other community members that are joining us with a goal to bring more art installations, public art into Batavia. Um, in the immediate future, we're working on murals with hopes to branch out into sculptures and bicycle racks and things of that nature through funding, both publicly and privately. This project here kind of fell into our lab and Bill's going to go into more details with that, but this is going to be, um, executed that we're hoping you vote for tonight, but yeah.
Thanks, Bonnie. Well, some of you don't know me. My name is Bill McGrath. So we, uh, we went through the downtown and we surveyed, uh, possible areas for bureaus and we have about twenty-five potential areas. We did run into a media company from the city who was looking for a place to, uh, put a mural and they wanted some place that was downtown and we immediately identified the part of the, or the River Street parking deck. We thought it was a great place because it's not historic. It's right in the middle of the action. It's really not going to take anything away from, uh, any other place. In fact, if anything, it'll dress up the parking deck. Uh, so we, uh, we talked to Laura about it. She asked Lori Bodderman to be the city representative on our group and we've been meeting and working this out with, uh, the artist and the, the media company and we're or at a place now where we're asking your actual permission. We worked out a license agreement that's been reviewed by your attorney that we're happy with and we're, uh, ready to go and start, uh, power washing the wall and hopefully it'll, should be done in about a month. And what you see on the screen is, uh, what it's going to look like. Uh, I should point out that if you see in the lower right-hand corner, there's a watering can. That will be an actual watering can that'll be screwed into the wall to give it kind of a three D kind of thing and we'll, we'll see how long that lasts, won't we? But, um, anyway, it's a really exciting thing. We're, uh, uh, it's totally paid for through, uh, the client of the media company. There will be no advertising on this mural at all. There'll be a sign, uh, for Water Street. Water Street, uh, the city of Batavia, Wave Petunia is the company that's paying for all this, but no, no real advertising at all. So we're really excited about it. We're already starting to look at our next, uh, next walls. We're looking at the gateways to the city. We, um, are hoping, we're happy that the city is working with us. We hope to be partners with the city in the future. Uh, everything we do, we want it to be, uh, uh, have some private funding, maybe some public assistance, but we know it's our obligation to start out with, uh, private funding. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. Oh, and by the way, the, um, as part of this, um, the media company, they're going to provide over the next year, they own three radio stations. They're going to provide about fifty thousand dollars of advertising on the, uh, on their three radio stations relating to Water Street Studios and the city of Batavia that can be, um, specifically keyed to certain events, uh, at the city. So it's a real good opportunity for the whole downtown. So we're really excited about that. So maybe our next plan will be to contact another media company and, and get on FM, you know, that, that's, that, that, that's the big thing. So I don't know if you have any questions or anything.
Is that going to be black washed the back or is that going to be?
It's, it's great. It's, it's, it's a dark, what is it?
Dark.
Oh, it's a dark.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And Bill, question, what does the media company get out of this? Media company, the media company, it's their client and wave Petunia.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, sure.
It's part of a marketing campaign for them?
But I thought you said there was going to be no marketing attached to this.
So on their sign that has their names attached to it, so they're going to use social promotions with.
Gotcha. Okay.
And like have, I don't know, influence.
Makes sense. I, I thought there was going to be no name associated with it. And I was going to say, what, why would they do this? But gotcha.
I could say staff is very, uh, supportive of this project. There was a lot of collaboration about the art to make sure it was something that was appealing to everyone involved. And as we know, one of the central features of our downtown during this season are the wave petunias that are hanging from all of those baskets along Wilson Street. So it was very complimentary and I think it's something that uh, I could picture people really enjoying at the farmer's market every week.
Going forward, they did offer to do, to donate petunias for all of our downtown baskets too. So something to take.
They already did.
Advantage of in the.
They, uh, donated, uh, twenty flats of flowers and my wife, Danetta, got them put in front of businesses on Wilson Street and Main Street, so.
What would be the, uh, what would be the estimated completion date?
Well, yeah, mid-June.
Okay.
Mid-June. And there's going to be like a, a ribbon cutting or something like that, and they're going to have a little open house, I think, across the street. So the council will all be invited and yep, so they want it done ASAP. I think it'll be great, especially with the farmer's market there. It would be wonderful.
Yeah, it would be nice to maximize that throughout the summer.
Yeah, I just had a, a general question. Um, it was brought up to me about a mural, um, sturdy shelter, actually. The building adjacent to them outside the, the roll-up door. They're like, wow, that would be cool to put a mural there. And they were trying to reach out to that building. What needs to be done for, so like, is that just an agreement between them, the building owner?
The city had with, uh, you know, the, the Lincoln Highway mural or that's on the wall on South Thirty-ones. It's just a license agreement, but it would be between Water Street Studios and the building owner and, you know, we would agree to maintain it and, and they would agree to leave it there. So our, our contract with the artist does include, um, repairing the mural and fixing it in case it's going to be covered with a whatever vandal proof, uh, coating you can do, but if it, if something does happen to it, part of the contract is the artist comes back and fixes it. So at least for a year.
With any mural in our downtown, because it's a historic district, it does go through HPC and that is not to approve the contents of what is the mural, but more how it will be affixed to the building. So in this case, the mural is being painted directly onto the brick. Historic preservation might have concerns if it's being, um, painted onto a different surface and then bolted into, you know, the limestone building. So they'd want to know how that would be done in order to not damage the historic limestone building.
We're going to take two or three at a time in front of HPC and talk about it. Because we're really aware of that and make sure they're okay with how we're going to do it. Some of them might be just painted on a substrate of some sort and just attached to the building.
It said, how, how many locations have you kind of charted out? Twenty-five?
A lot of blank walls if you start driving around and you like think about it.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. How do you qualify that? And how does anybody listening who says like, God, I would, I got the perfect spot. How did they reach you to say like, ever consider this?
They could call the city because Lori Bodderman, the communications manager is part of our team and it'll get to us in some way and, um, we're, we're trying to prioritize by, uh, the entries to downtown. And then we'll contact those private property owners, see how they feel about it. If it works out, take it to HPC and then get funding somehow and then move forward piece by piece. We, I know I always have too much to say, don't I? We're not only looking for artists who do it, the entire mural, we're looking at things where there are artists who come in and will do an outline and, and have people from the community actually paint the mural. There are some people who come in and do some workshops, even cutting mosaics because we're not just limited to painting. So if we're going to try and involve the community as well.
And we will, we'll start our own, um, marketing as well. We'll create our own stuff under Water Street Studios. So there'll be a way for community to reach out direct as well.
Well, I have a suggestion just because it was brought up before. There's a place in front of R and S that'll, that little round building, the old water tank. I mean, that's an entryway to Batavia that the city owns. So I think that'd probably be pretty easy to get approval on that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Put it on the list.
Was that, was that a motion? This absolutely makes my heart sing. I, every time I travel through a city, um, like a road trip, I spend eight hours of my trip just photographing public art. So it's so cool that you guys are doing a program like this. Uh, question, are there, uh, or has there been any discussion regarding, um, like viral type of imagery? I've seen in a couple of cities, lines of people waiting to take pictures next to certain images or whatnot.
Oh, no. Yeah, we, we like to follow the model that Aurora uses for their public art where they do a call for portfolios. And then once we get a good base of portfolios, like we put out a wall on a project, we get those portfolios in and then we review their work. We'll select a few artists that really pique the committee's interest and we will pay them, uh, minimal fee, um, for putting an actual presentation together and then we'll select one of those. And hopefully we'll get some good viral ones in there.
All different kinds of, all different kinds of art too.
It was in Austin a couple of years ago and it was a line of fifty people next to a popsicle stand waiting to take a picture for just some words above their head.
It might have been that before I die. There's one that's really popular out there.
Be cool. And does staff need any additional direction or?
Um, there, the next item is to approve the license agreement.
Agreement, resolution twenty-three dash seventy-seven dash R. Is there any additional discussion regarding, uh, this execution of an agreement?
Wanted to say thank you for doing it.
I make a motion that we send that to council?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Very much.
Yeah.
All right, moving into item number ten. This is resolution twenty-three dash seventy dash R approval of a, a plumbing inspector contract. This is a revised fee schedule.
Thank you. This is a request from our plumbing contractor to, uh, make some changes to their fee schedules. They have not made any changes in five years. Um, so they would like to make some adjustments to their fee schedule. Um, I've outlined that in the staff report. Um, it's relatively minimal and, you know, in line with, you know, inflation. Increasing the irregular inspection fee from sixty to seventy dollars, consultations from fifty to sixty dollars, making it seventy dollars for commercial. They wanted to change so one of the ranges of, of regular inspections because that gets kind of late in the day for them. So they wanted to make the latest inspection range from two to four PM, which is pretty consistent with, you know, contractors and their work too, because they don't want to work too late either. So uh, and then changing some of the, uh, planned review fees based on the actual work and the size of the, of the building. So, um, we have had very good work, work, working relationship with first inspection. Um, we feel that their service has been quality and that they've been able to get inspections done when we've needed to and even on emergency basis. Uh, right now we're doing a lot of the lead line replacements and they're doing a yeoman's job of, of that because there are a lot of, of those that are, they're going out of our department right now too. So um, they're doing a very good job at trying to get those done. So, um, nothing else in the contract has changed other than just the fee schedule, which they have made the request for. So, uh, we are recommending approval of the amendment to the contract with the fee schedule.
Any other discussion?
How does this compare with surrounding communities? Is that?
These standards. They actually do inspections for Geneva, so they, they're making the same request from Geneva as well. So.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I would entertain a motion if there's no additional discussion. Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? And the eyes have it. Excellent. Thank you. Moving into, uh, item number eleven. That's resolution twenty-three dash seventy-five dash R. This is authorizing execution of a change order number four with V three. That's for the Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin, uh, for some additional trees and that's an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. How many trees does that get us? Look back on those.
Thirty-eight.
You already found it.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Okay, thank you. Um, we've talked about this topic several times before. I don't need to hopefully go into too much of the background. Uh, we were directed by city council to go back to V three to get, um, pricing for these thirty-eight new trees that'll be placed on public property, uh, provide additional screening to the residents in that area. And V three did come back to us. And so one of the questions that may come up is why are we just using V three? Why don't we go out to a landscaper? V three is under contract right now to get the basin established because the basin is native plantings and there is a period of establishment. And instead of having another contractor come in there and potentially cause damage and then they have V three tell us that they caused damage and it's just easier and we already had the costs established, uh, to have V three come in and do it. And that's why we are recommending a change order because we already have a contract with V three to basically have them plant the additional trees as we've discussed with city council for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Any discussion from the council regarding this?
Question. Has there been any communication with the neighbors? Are they aware of this coming or?
As far as I know, yes. I think that there's been ongoing communications. Yeah. And we also have had communications with the county, although that hasn't been finalized yet. Uh, the county may also be help, helping us with some of this as well. Sorry.
Not saying it's not right to go with V three, but have we, have we done our due diligence just to make sure they're not getting a little overzealous?
Well, they, they, I mean, they were a little bitter on the original project and these costs from.
I'm not saying, I mean, even if they're a little high, I, I agree with you going with the established.
No, that we're not in the left field. Let's put it that way. Yes, yes. Good question though. The other, the other aspects make it worthwhile because.
Hundred percent.
Yep. I do know this was an unusual process, um, to go to this, to go to this level of customer service for a, a project, uh, uh, in hindsight, uh, I know this is a subjective kind of question, but was the outcome, uh, what we, what we, what you expected? And are you happy with the outcome? Or the additional landscaping? Yeah. It, it, I think it'll definitely help the concerns that were raised by the residents. Bottom line is that this landscaping is still going to take some years to, to mature. Through that, we can't get around. But yes, I believe we're adding additional landscaping that'll further to help, help their concerns.
The other thing that we're going to be installing in the area is signage, um, that explains how, uh, the expectation is for the growth of both the trees and the natural plantings that have been put in that area. And there'll be two signs. Kent County has agreed to allow us to, uh, put a sign along the path that's along Kirk Road so that there's one facing in that direction. And then there'll also be one that's facing toward the neighborhood as well to explain that.
Thanks. I, I would just remark that I, I was, I had a chance to speak to V three, uh, sort of offline. They said, yeah, this is not something that they, they typically are asked to do, uh, but found it refreshing from a customer service standpoint as well. And I'm, I'm hoping that this process is so that we can consider incorporating in the future, just to make sure we have a, a chance to, uh, make sure the residents are, 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 are being heard and then ask them again. Right? And we are actually because per council's direction, we're going through this process right now with Carriage Crest. So we'll be coming back to city council with, I think, four or five options for Carriage Crest. That'll be gone, basically vetting this at the front end with the, with the residents. So. I'm very much so looking forward to that outcome. Excellent. Um, so we do need then, um, a motion, I would make a motion to be sent twenty-three dash seventy-five dash R, authorizing execution of a change order number four with V three for the Mahoney Creek Detention Basin additional trees for amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three ninety. Motion in a second. Any additional discussion regarding this item?
Dan, just one thing I wanted to bring up again, even with this addition of the extra, you know, landscaping and trees, we are still under budget on the whole project.
Yes.
So, so that's. So, so that's something to keep in mind as well. It's not like we went out and spent extra money to make this happen. This was money that was still available in the budget for that project.
There's no additional discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
All of those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to seeing these trees. I'm moving on to um, item number twelve. It's a discussion regarding the columbarium sculpture competition. Okay. Last time I was here to talk about this topic, I think I mentioned at least two or three times during that conversation, my desire to make this process as fair as possible to all of the artists. Um, so with that being kind of the background, I threw the question out to city council and um, some council members um, asked that I bring this back tonight for discussion. So in the original call to artists, we outlined requirements that stated that Batavia City Council will select no more than five finalist candidates. Will each be asked to provide a scale model that will provide an accurate depiction of the artist's work. And so council last time did select finalist candidates. You selected three finalist candidates and I notified each of those candidates following the council meeting and then reminded them again of the requirements that were set forth in the call to artists. And we established a date per the call to artists, um, a date of July twelfth for submission of their scaled models. One of the artists, uh, the artist of Benediction, Laura's got that pulled up there, submitted a formal request for the city to consider waiving our requirement for a scaled model and instead allowing the artist to submit, actually have the full-size piece here uh, for city council's consideration. When they created the piece, they only created the, the piece. They only created one size of the piece. They didn't do a model before they created the piece. So the artist is asking for the city's consideration to allow that, um, which would obviously be a waiver from the, from the process. So I laid out three options here. One is that city council elects to waive uh, the, the, the scaled model requirement and allow the final work to be selected amongst the three previously selected pieces. Option number two, city council chooses to enforce the scale model requirement and the artist of Benediction is provided with an opportunity to produce a scaled model or withdraw from the competition. That would leave just two finalists, obviously. And then option number three, city council chooses to enforce the scale model requirement and then also selects additional finalist candidates for consideration. And if you recall, coun- council had debated whether to select three or five finalists during the meeting. Uh, the two additional works that were not selected were Sun, Self-Sustained Harmony and Sunrise. I'm not sure if Laura has those up or not. Uh, but if not, um, the artist, but it is important to know that the artist of Sunrise is the same artist that created Benediction and therefore there's a possibility that both Sunrise and Benediction could be withdrawn if the artist selects to not do scale models. So that would then just leave three remaining finalists. So, and I did include pictures of all those in, in the latest packet. So really it's going to come down to whether council would like to waive the requirement for the scale model and allow the full-size piece to be considered or enforce the, the requirement for scale model.
My opinion is we don't need a scale model if there's the full-size one. I mean, we're giving that as an option to make it easy on them knowing that if the full one isn't available. So I, I think we're good with the full if that's what they want to provide. That's my opinion.
I agree strongly. Yes, there's no reason if that works best for the artist. I think that seems very reasonable.
I, I, I guess I would throw this out there. I'm just, I hate to be this guy. Does anyone here own a piece of art like this? I do. Uh, not quite as big as this. The only reason, and I, I've actually been one of the people that would raise a brief objection. So I just throw this out here for discussion. They're very commanding, beautiful pieces when you see them in person and you can fall in love with them when you see them. I guess they're so beautiful. Um, I don't think it's malicious in, in intent, but it definitely, um, it definitely gives them some sort of advantage when you see the piece in front of you. It does. Uh, to have someone build a beautiful piece of artwork that we should be, be so lucky to have as be the winner next to a smaller model of, of a competitor, um, which will probably dwarf uh, what the, the competitor would turn in. Seems to be on its face to be unfair, especially when we laid the rules out. Isn't I, my objection is not to penalize. My objection is, is just very simply to say, um, if, if you're, if you're going to treat the artwork the same, it's not, it's not fair to have somebody bring in a piece of bronze or something cast and then have someone bring in paper mache. It's, it's, it's a, a vastly different um, game, I guess.
That was going to be my question, having never juryed a sculpture competition like this is what quality are the scaled models usually coming to us in and are they going to be at such a lesser quality compared to the images and the mockups that we saw?
They're not Legos and cotton balls. It's not like that. They're pretty substantial.
They really are. I, there are a couple of the pieces that um, were the demonstrations for the bridge sculptures and they're gorgeous.
So they're still comparable?
Yes.
I mean, because I'm kind of with Dan on like that it's going to be a stark difference and, and give an unfair advantage to the larger ones if the.
Ordinarily, of course, that maybe this goes without saying, but the idea for doing the scale model is that it's a relatively small investment in order to be able to imagine what the larger piece is. And I think that in this case, the artist is just saying, I've already got the piece. I don't think that they're trying to get a leg up, but as Dan said, it is more impressive to see the larger piece than the smaller piece that you don't have to visualize what it would look like on a larger scale because you've got it.
I, I would open it up and say any artist is available to bring the full-size one in if, if they think that would bring them the.
But I would, I would have agreed with you until I found out how much it costs to make one of these things. Because in, in our previous competition, I think we advanced, was it like five thousand dollars in materials alone. So it was cost prohibitive for some of these uh, casts um, to be done. They just, they wouldn't even be able to enter the contest.
I just have a question. Um, how, how does a process work? Are they like sat in front of us and we kind of have to sit there and compare it? And if that's the case, is it possible to maybe spread them out a little bit? And that way we're not like sitting there looking at everything next to each other and almost comparing it. We're just looking at the art and, you know, have their sketches there and have their scale to kind of view that. Maybe look at that process a little bit different to allow for that.
Yeah. What we've done in the past is, is kind of set this, it up in one of our conference rooms.
I was gonna say that.
And maybe break it up, you know? It definitely take the one that's a finished product away from the others and then that.
Like in mediations, we call them breakout rooms. So you just have a breakout room for each person. You kind of go on like a little field trip and they can give their little spiel and tell us what they have to say and, and you walk out of that room and refocus on the next.
We can do that here in the government center. The, the intention was for council to establish the group that was going to be up for consideration. So three pieces. Then the next step was to open it up to folks like we're, that were here tonight and the city council and to have the public come in and ultimately have everyone's input. Uh, but after we got through the first round with city council, so. Yeah.
I have a question. I mean, maybe you know this or don't know this, but uh, the one that's labeled Genesis, the pictures they submitted looks very realistic, like it's already been made somewhere because it's right in front of a church. So, I think that one already exists too. And maybe it's a duplicate. Maybe we're not being original, but I don't know.
That's actually pretty common.
Yes.
Good.
That they would reproduce it in other places.
The one we have on, on River Street is, is in other communities.
Gotcha. I understand that. I'm just saying it seems like.
And so having original was not, not a requirement of, of the, of the competition. And that artist did reply that he does have a scaled model. So, um, but obviously he also has a full-size.
Right. I mean, I'm not being critical of being original. I'm just saying it seems like at least another one probably could bring in a full-size one if they want to.
He wanted to, right. Yeah, we should offer him that option. And it, it, I just, I guess I reiterate this. I, I do not mean to insult the intelligence of, of, of the committee. I can tell the difference between uh, these pieces too. I think I can be fair and objective, but I just want to make sure and also feel comfortable with that.
And I appreciate that. Um, you know, kind of, that's where it kind of brought up the idea of let's separate them out and.
Like, I like your idea. We'll go with option one then, which is, yep. Okay. That's great. Thank you. This, I, I just want to feel good about the process being fair and why I came back. Appreciate it. We've turned out some amazing public art and it's, I'm terrified, like I said, to do this by committee, but we've been so lucky so far. So great. And again, now we'll be involving the public. So we'll have a larger committee. Excellent. Thank you. Alright, moving on to item number thirteen. Uh, so the discussion regarding the voting method we use uh, for city council to select candidates for council vacancies.
Okay, since we have a council uh, vacancy, uh, the last time that this happened, um, we used a form of ranked choice voting. And the method that we use is called the board account method. Um, ranked choice voting is of course where you have uh, several candidates. You rank them um, as to your preference. Under the board account method, um, it, it, the scores are, or the ranks are um, assigned a score. And then uh, those values are added together and um, you know, in the case of one, two and three, the, the lowest score would win. Um, the, I guess issue with that method of uh, ranked choice voting is that it's intended to elect the most broadly acceptable candidates as to, as opposed to um, other forms of voting. Um, for instance, the instant runoff voting method, um, where it's uh, the candidate who receives the majority of votes of one is the winner. That would be um, the candidate that is preferred by the majority. And um, if there are more than two candidates in that case, then um, if one of those candidates does not receive more than fifty percent in the first round, then the third candidate is dropped and there is a revote of the other two candidates until someone achieves a majority of the number one votes. And by doing that, again, you result, the result is the candidate preferred by the majority. And in the packets, uh, Max Weiss put together um, a detailed memo summarizing these methodologies. And so we just want to bring this back to you for a discussion. If you would like to uh, consider changing to the instant runoff voting method. If you'd like to stick with the board account method or if you would prefer looking at some other method for selecting the candidate for the vacancy. And Max is here tonight and he would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Which way did we use last time?
Board account. So in other words.
That's what we used last.
Yes. Yes. So it was one point for a one rank, two points for a two rank and three points for a three rank. The person who ends up with the lowest sum of their ranking scores is the candidate that's selected. But that means you may end up with a candidate who had fewer number one rank votes if that same person who had the number, the uh, most number one rank votes had more number three rank votes than someone else, if that makes sense.
Makes sense. How many times have we used that in the past? Does it?
I would say for the last three vacancies, we've used the board account method.
Before that, we were using instant runoff.
Uh, we would have had to ask the Bill McGrath because I just don't remember. That would precede me.
I, I was appointed and I thought I was appointed by this method that we're discussing tonight.
And there's two of you though? So it may have been.
There were two. Are you saying?
It's when you get to the third candidate that this makes a difference.
Mm-hmm.
It did. Yeah.
Definitely many differences.
I was reading through the packet today and um, the instant running runoff voting I thought was intriguing because immediately whoever received the majority of voters would win it if they had the majority.
Right. So then in that case, there wouldn't really be a ranked um, ranked choice voting, correct? Well, you would still, that would be how you vote. So you would vote by ranking.
Yeah.
Instead of um, forced choice where you have a ballot and you're only allowed to pick one. Um, and so it's still a ranked choice, but you uh, it, the winner must achieve a majority of one top vote.
Right. So then the ranking doesn't really apply at that point. Because that would only be if there wasn't one with a majority of votes.
Right. If you've got three, the, the ranking matters. Once you drop down to the two, one of those two is going to receive a majority of one uh, one ranking vote.
So then I tried to Google and I was unsuccessful. So maybe Max can help me out on this. Um, was, does ranked choice voting change with the size of group? Like we're a fairly small group of people, only fourteen, you know? Entire states are using this now, some of them. Alaska is one of them. Um, for election cycles now. That's a lot of people. I'm sure it plays a lot differently than a group of fourteen people. So does it still make sense in a group of fourteen? Um, how does that change or does it at all between these two?
I would say it really doesn't change all that much. Essentially what you're doing is the, the method of actually voting for a candidate isn't going to change regardless of which method we use of ranked choice voting. So the actual ballot you'd fill out as a voter is going to be the same regardless of a board account or on a instant runoff voting di- difference. What will matter is that essentially, what we'll do is with those fourteen votes that would, thirteen if there's a vacancy. You know, what you do is you then say the first round, if there's a candidate who gets a majority, then that candidate is the one who is selected. However, let's say candidate A gets forty-five percent, candidate B gets thirty percent and these numbers aren't going to add up.
Twenty-five.
There you go. Uh, but the third candidate gets that. Uh, what you would do is you would drop the third candidate. Those votes, you would look at whoever those people selected as their second choice. And then that would go to their second choice candidate and then we go on and so forth until we get a winner. Um, but in the research I did, I didn't really see anything that would indicate that it wouldn't work for a small group. Um, hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Would think there's good and bad to, I mean, you could challenge either one on any given specific thing. I would vote, we just stick with what we're doing and be consistent and cover our butt. We change it now and now in the next election would have, it would have been different. Like now we got two people that are going, what's, what's going on there? I'd rather just be consistent, I think.
The, the appointments are always interesting because uh, as we saw in this last election, nobody ran. When appointment time comes around, sometimes we have, the, the very first one, there were six people vying for one of the seats. And so six people gave presentations for uh, Lucy Attack uh, on, on that seat. Um. But there's no opposition. Right. Right. And this was, and this was an interesting election too. So, um, um, we're, we're also a community that's lucky in that our mayor is giving us this choice. Uh, no one in Illinois, as far as I'm aware, does it quite like Mayor Shelkey does. He, most mayors make the selection themselves. You, with your, your wisdom, uh, thought it'd be best that if I, if I can quote you uh, from previous stories I've written, you want the person to hit the ground running. So that way it's someone that we think we can work with, someone that shows, showing that they've done the research and is not, not here for a single issue. You could just pick someone because that's the way the statute is written. So we're lucky that he gives it to us.
I got a, a, an opinion from the then city attorney as to whether or not we could do that. And he said, well, if you don't make the appointment, then it falls to the city council. So why don't you just tell them? You're not, you don't want to make the appointment. You'd rather have the selection done by the, it was then ten that were on the city council. And that's the way it will be. And so I, I will tell you that since we, I've done this, I probably have been called by at least a half dozen other mayors in the state of Illinois. I probably have been called by at least a half dozen other mayors in the state of Illinois asking me, how do you do it? How'd you do it? You know, blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, these, whoever gets appointed has to be the person that works with the other people on the city council. So I think it, it speaks well that whoever gets selected got a favorable vote from the majority of the members voting on the city council and it seats them very well into the new position. And so everybody's, I think there's several towns that now do it this way, so.
What I'm about to say has nothing to reflect on previous appointments. This is just me thinking of the size of group here. I would rather see that the majority of us who choose the, our first person be elected. I mean, we're a small group of people. We get to interview these people right here, one by one, um, instead of which is true of the, the board of, the most average person gets selected of the group.
Most widely received.
The widely, the middle choice.
The least objective.
Yeah, that's the least risky.
Right, the least objective, but, but not objected to.
Yes.
That's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
That's the word.
I think this process, however, we've always done it, has produced that result. I mean, you know, the one that's the most qualified seems to be able to be figured out by the aldermen who should be appointed.
I think in the spirit of what the mayor just said about, um, the candidate that gets the most votes, the most preference among the city council is the one that moves forward. I think that's the instant runoff voting method as opposed to the board. So I would be in support of switching to that for appointments moving forward.
Dan, this is Alan. Um, you know, after going through and reading this and seeing it on paper, I, I think the instant runoff one is what we should use, especially as I think over the course of this and what I've seen in my time on council is we have had more interest in the appointment side of it. A- as opposed to the actual elections. Um, I think one, a lot of people feel, I don't know, safer maybe when they're coming and just sitting in front of the fourteen of us rather than actually have to run a campaign. And I do think that we have been extremely lucky in the candidates that we've had. I don't think we've ever had, you know, a place where we said, well, we're not going to just, we're not going to pick any of these people or there's nobody good within this group. Um, I think we've always had, you know, the, the fortunate place to be in, that there have been some really good candidates. And a lot of times people come forward out of that and they end up on another committee or commission because of the contact that they've had with the mayor. But I would be in support of us changing this and, you know, maybe the other, the good thing out of all that's happened in the past few times is that we actually quantify this and have it down on paper. Not just, yeah, this is the way we've done it in the past. That's my two cents.
Um, I understand, uh, what Alderman's running and not wanting to kind of bait and switch, like we put the, you know, applications are, uh, you know, the vacancy is out there. Um, but I also agree with what Abby said. I'd rather have the top choice for most people be the person who sits in the chair. So I would, I think, I also think it seems like that's the instant runoff method and I would be in support of going that route.
I don't really reference right now as I'm thinking about it, but I, just to point out that when we're saying like the best person, um, with instant runoff with the other method, like I said, it seemed like there was, you'd have to really, somebody that was really objectionable to certain groups.
That's never happened.
Somebody who's really objectionable to other groups and then the person in the middle kind of gets in. So that would seem to be something that would be more of a compromise because if there is a person that's very objectionable, let's say they get six third place votes and they get seven first place votes. Um, but then another person gets six first place votes, seven third place votes, and then the other person just gets thirteen seconds. That would seem to be the person that might work best with everybody because there's clearly two people then that would not be necessarily compatible with half the city council. And that can be a problem. One that I really don't want to deal with, to tell you the truth. Those people can then just run the regular election if they're that, you know.
In this last election, they only needed six signatures to get on the ballot, in my word.
Really?
Six signatures. I, I assumed I was running a campaign.
Anyway, so that's my thought. I think with that thought, I've convinced myself I'd rather just stay with the way we were doing it.
That's a good word. I can hear that.
Are we, we are codifying it then? Is that what we're asking? So going into our government, into like our governance committee, is that, that's what we're asking?
Yes.
It'll all be rendered moot if one person is the only one standing up here before us for the vacancy, so, you know. But, uh, or if there's only two, I mean, this really only comes if there's more than two candidates, I guess.
So do we want to, uh, go around and have people vote for the method and the majority method? The majority method wins.
Wait, why don't we? Well, I think I'm in agreement that those are the only two we should consider. There's all kinds of other ones listed there. I think we can all agree on that, right?
Anyone feels strongly against any of the methods, strongly against?
Wrong opinion. I just kind of talked myself into the one, thinking it through. Either one, I think is effective. If we're going to struggle, I'll vote for the border.
Well, so we.
We have to keep track or do we want to raise hands?
You know, I'd rather, I'd rather it stands. If I can get us out of here before eight o'clock, that'd be great.
So what was that?
It's not going to happen. We got an executive session.
Yeah, for sure.
As his method is, is.
It's status quo, status quo.
Florida.
Florida's the one that we used last time.
Order.
All right, move on to raise your hand.
Alan, what would be your vote?
I would go with the instant runoff.
Okay. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, Boarda's wins. So we'll stay with the same method, but we want to, um, put that into a policy.
Yeah, regardless of what we pick, that, that would definitely be what we should do. So that the public knows how we're doing it.
Sounds good. One of the things I just thought of, I believe that vacancies are mentioned in, um, our code. And so maybe we update our code to include Boarda method. And since we had this discussion here, would people be comfortable with me just bringing that to the June fifth, uh, city council meeting for approval?
Great.
Sure.
And especially speaking in general, and then Alan, you can certainly, if you will here, we, we had a governance committee ten years ago. Uh, we, we had a governance subcommittee even briefly where we were going through line by line text. And we're making some really great headway to update some things. Um, it, I think it makes sense to, to have that committee by working again, or at least if staff has any section of the code they're not completely comfortable with or, or think that maybe they, we could give some better direction. Would that be, would that be a useful time? Does anyone feel strongly about that?
So the entire code really needs to be reviewed. As I go, uh, in the next cow meeting, um, Max is preparing an ordinance to amend our amusement, um, licensing and fees and regulations and we were just kind of shocked and amazed. It was like time traveling, uh, back to nineteen twenty, reading our, the amusements part of our code. And there are many, many sections like that. Yeah, exactly. Of, for, uh, the benefit of all of your time, it'd probably be good for, uh, staff to do the initial review and bring back red line, you know, sections of the code for you to take a look at those changes and then determine if you want to make, you know, even more changes to that, or you don't agree with the changes. Just to, you know, so that you guys don't have to go through the labor of the first read, which can be painful.
I've read code. It's not controversial. It's laughable in some cases. So if you're really going to go line by line, you're going to have a great time.
Yeah, there's, there's some funnies in there.
Public dancing.
Yes.
You.
Yeah, blowing steam whistles can only be done by, uh, trains and not local businesses. So no more steam.
There's something about deputizing aldermen to, to run around town with, uh, firearms. Okay, all right.
Well, thank you very much. We've got direction.
All right, next, moving in, uh, to, I remember fourteen, that is a project status.
Um, under project status, I'd like to start with, um, uh, asking if city council would be in favor of, um, a change to our single use bag fee ordinance. When we were speaking with, uh, Woodstock, they had an exception for curbside pickup and for delivery, uh, service because in those cases, the customer really wouldn't have a choice whether to, uh, be charged the bag fee or not. And so, and kind of a fairness aspect would, I just wanted to ask if all of you would be in favor of making an exception for curbside delivery and, I'm sorry, curbside pickup and deliveries.
Okay, question. Yes, I have a question for Mark. How does Aldi do curbside delivery, curbside pickup?
We charge per bag.
I, um, I was going to ask about Aldi too, because I often Instacart from them, um, and know that I'm going to pay that fee when I do that. It goes along with the convenience of having curbside delivery. So I'm okay with still charging.
So I guess the way that it came up, um, amongst staff when we discussed it was that there are people who are doing the pickup and delivery because they're unable to shop at the grocery store too.
There's some way we could, uh, create a code for them to put in? Cause I agree. I mean, there's a cost of everything, right? And some of that convenience factor equals cost for some of these businesses or for some of these businesses and they can make more profit off it. I don't want to stop that, but if there's a little code that they can type in, like, you know, uh, whatever the little key word would be, but that's, that's an option. That could waive the delivery cost.
I think that would be an appropriate solution to this because I also agree that most of the time, you know, if I do a curbside pickup from Walmart, I am a hundred percent okay with paying for bags that are placed in my car for the convenience of not having to shop. The benefit is because of a disability. I think that that should be something to consider.
I think pre-COVID, it was more popular with people who couldn't take it versus now it's, people got used to it. And now it's, I mean, I know my personal family, it's, we, we still go to the store when we go, oh, we just don't want to pay the extra for, for that, but then it's, other times it's totally worth it for us, so.
It gets to be clear though. Way hard to be able to figure out if somebody has a disability.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'd be able to. Yeah.
So you don't, you don't find out. You just, they have to know the code.
I'm not trying to communicate that to the persons with disabilities about what code.
This is already a nightmare as it is.
Yeah, it is. One way.
I said, you just let them, I say.
Keep it in.
Say. No, I'd say.
Well, how much money is this representing?
So it's, this is, it's not a money problem really. It's more of a changing.
Let's get it to zero. I also, with Aldi too, can like, I'm thinking of the Aldi model. And so I was one, I was very curious how this is going to play out once we got to this point and people were talking about curbside delivery because I didn't know how retailers were going to handle it. Um, I was also thinking that there would be a box I could check because I do target curbside all the time, like, don't bag it. Um, I will still show up and you roll a cart to me and I put it in my car like I do at Aldi or I put it in my bags and I, I take it away and then I'm not charged the bags. I'm not using the bags. And I know what to expect.
So leave it up to the retailer.
Well, I was going to say just not charge. I mean, Aldi is going to charge no matter what because whether you're in the store or you're not, you're charged ten cents a bag. So Aldi, I can't speak for them, but they, that's not going to change. So, and the reason I would say to, well, unfortunately, every time I've done curbside of something, I'm like, seriously? You know, this was six bags. I could have done this in three. Um, so now people are paying, unfortunate that they're getting extra bags that they don't need, but now they're paying extra for something that they weren't necessarily expecting. I would say eliminate it because that's just the, I hate the word fair, but it's the fairest way to do it. It's just to say, don't charge because you don't have, you don't really have a choice on how many bags you're going to get. You can't say, hey, can you squeeze us on the two bags, please?
I mean, how much choice do you get at the grocery line now though? I've watched them put one item in the bag and send it down and I'm like, well, put a few more things in there. Like I forgot my bags. I feel guilty enough, like, you know, and you get, you end up in that situation when you're in person too.
But you could tell, I've, I've told them, just put those together, like, you know, just, can you just put the eggs on top of the bread? I'll be fine. It's, the bread's still going to be edible.
You're that guy.
You know what I mean? Just, you just wait for the fee for the pickup. I mean, for the curb side. It's just easier that way. And really, I think it's a lower percentage of the total amount that's going out anyway. It's.
And so it speaks of training issues too. A kid's first week is more likely to do that, like, once he's a pro after his first year.
I've had the mayor of Elgin contact me. And shortly after you had the conversation and you had the vote to put it in, it got, the same idea got brought to the Elgin city council. And they, so according to the mayor overwhelmingly rejected it. And so they did not want to pursue it. And I've been told by a couple others who asked me not to say who they were, tell me the same thing. So we're going to be kind of here, kind of here by ourselves for a while with this whole idea because I've also been told by some folks that are in the real estate business on Randall Road that they, they know of at least one situation where somebody came in and was looking at a space in Batavia. And after we did this, they decided to move up to Geneva. So that's, that's there. So I just share it with you for no reason for or against it, but you know what the kind of the reaction of the neighbors is.
Interact with that statement. I know there's a lot of people who are very thankful we are doing this also and are proud to be Batavians because of this, that we're being so environmentally friendly.
Told and.
Yeah.
I went into a, a Metro West meeting up in Geneva. Or was sitting there and I had some other stuff, so I just stopped in for a few minutes. I couldn't stay and right away, the mayor of Elgin jumps up and says, Jeff, come over here to the corner, corner of the room. And he, he had a lot of questions and he said, well, he said, I think we've decided there's just too much compulsion here. We're not going to do it in Elgin, so.
Well, and other towns will see how well we do it and hopefully follow suit someday. Um, one more comment, Dan. So curbside pickup, let's see if I get this right. If I drive to the store and have them put it in the back of my trunk, that does not cost me extra fees most places. To have them bring it to my house, I'm already paying like ten extra dollars for them to do that. What's fifty cents more for bags when I'm already paying ten, or ten bucks for a delivery?
Give me the value judgment at that point.
Yeah. And just to keep consistent with what we're trying to do here. That's just my opinion though.
How many are opposed to the exception? How many would like to continue to charge for the, um, curbside pickup and delivery, just by a show of hands?
Three. Or five. Alan?
Alan, do you have a preference?
I would, I would say that we just charge all, all of them. So I don't know if that's the exception, if this is the one I should vote for.
That's six. Yeah, that, then that makes six, seven to six, so.
And, and.
What I'll do is, um, I'll, I'll put the amendment to the ordinance, we'll just bring it to the next committee of the whole to be voted on. Does that sound good?
Just an observation that I've seen, um, going to Aldi and it actually was two different vehicles the same day I was at Aldi. They have boxes in the back of their cars and they're bringing their groceries out in the cart. And just putting them in the boxes in their car. And I'm hoping that at some point. That that's a model that will be an option for some of these um, grocery stores that the residents can say. Just bring the groceries out in the cart, I have containers in my car. Um, cause we have residents that are already doing that for themselves. Again, Aldi shoppers.
Alright. Other items under my project status, um, just to remind you that on June sixth is gonna be. Um, a special meeting of the city council and the park district board. That's our next meeting about the. Damn and the depot pond. Our community flag that we were given as a gift from the Chamber of Commerce is up on the flagpole at the government center and that'll remain there. Until the unity flag goes up on June first in celebration of uh, Pride Month. And we are planning to have the mayor raise the unity flag on June first at ten o'clock AM. And we hope that you guys might be able to join us if you're available for that.
Or not right before the meeting like last.
No. Um, and I have heard from members of the LGBTQ community that they're happy to see that we're gonna. Get it up there right on June first, uh, rather than wait and so that we are raising it. Some other communities are raising it on the first two and they want. Batavia to be right there.
Those that don't like to sleep in, yes, for sure. Also, my alarm really.
Um, from the police department, we have very successful cop on top. The police department would like to thank all the community members who. Came out to uh, support that event. And on Monday, the uh, police department, uh, we's. Had the swearing in to the mayor's office and we, we will have him at the next city council meeting. But we welcomed Officer Daniel Carpino to the police department. Um, and Daniel is a Batavia resident already and has previous law enforcement. Experience with both Niles and Chicago Police Department. Um, in Public Works Engineering's working with the contractor to implement the one-way uh, traffic solution on North River Street. And um, preparations are anticipated to be completed by Memorial Day weekends. Um, and then in about six months, we expect our contractor to come back and be constructing the bump out. Uh, and the, and the brick paving that will go along with that and um, as we discussed. The North River Street will be closed from uh, Thursday afternoon until Monday morning through the summer season. And Public Works is also going to be installing two dismount your bike signs. On the east side of Shumway Avenue on the block between Wilson Street and First Street with the addition of more businesses in that area. And people coming in and out of that, uh, those businesses, uh, we noticed that that would be a, a good area to protect people by walking our bikes. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes.
Just one quick question, sorry if I missed it. The special committee of the whole on the sixth, is that still at seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I don't know if any other alderman kind of feel the same way, um, but as far as. July fourth, which is a Tuesday with River Street, I don't know if that's a opportunity for us to maybe extend. The River Street, Street closure, um, for those businesses and for people to be out. I mean, I say that now, but. But probably will get rain through that, those two days, but I don't know if that's something maybe we want to consider or discuss again. As we get closer to the July fourth.
Likewise. So keep it closed through Tuesday.
Wednesday.
The Wednesday morning.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect anybody from, to come in on July fourth, I wouldn't want that, but.
Might as well just keep it closed the whole week because.
Well, I, I didn't want to extend that, but I, 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 I'm okay with that if that's what you guys are thinking for that one week.
But what night is the fireworks?
Tuesday.
It is on the fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the third is a holiday, basically. Night, I would say do it the whole week.
And I just say that to, you know, let the businesses know, you know, to let them know that it's gonna be closed and. You know, maybe have, um, do, yeah. Yeah, for that, for that whole week.
There for us away.
Alright.
Moving on.
Everybody's supporting.
And I have something else. I, I just wanted to, and let all the members of the council know a little thing that's kind of happening around town and I don't know if it's. Going anyplace or not. And it really doesn't have any impact on any of us on the city council. Cause we're not gonna vote or be against it or for it or anything. But there is, you know, we have six senior living communities in this town and I think. We've tried to chase down, how many people that really involves, but you know, you got maybe eight hundred up here at the homestead, so that. Boosts the number. So we think it's probably around two thousand, maybe, okay? So, starting last Friday and certainly on Saturday when I was down here at the. River Street walking around for a few minutes. I had several senior citizens talk to me about how they are all enraged and upset. About the conversations that are now going on in Washington DC about what we're gonna do with the budget spiraling out of control. And that there has to be a decision made by a date here in about ten days or something. As to what we are or are not gonna cut and how we're gonna do it and whatever have you. And. One of them told me quite bluntly, well, Jeff, if they cut the social security. They're gonna put a bunch of us into a real panic and we're gonna be screaming like hell. And I said, well, I can understand why you would. I said. And then they said, we think we probably will want to do some type of a community demonstration. And I said, well, I, you know, I guess you can do what you want to do, but. You gotta get to the people who are kind of in the mold or gonna be making the decision, so you gotta get to your congressman. Or your US Senator, that's where you need to. So they said, well, yeah, that's right, we got a new congressman, don't we? I said, yeah, we have Foster and Foster has just moved to a new office. Over at Galena and Orchard and the west side of Aurora, he's on the second floor of a bank down there. And you know, I think, I said, he's, my opinion, he's a nice enough guy, I wouldn't go charging in there screaming and hollering at him. I said, you know, if I was you, everybody's always, these demonstrations always come out kind of bad and everything looks kind of bad. So they said, well, we may get fifteen or twenty people and go down there. And I said, well, if you're gonna get fifteen or twenty. I guess what I'd suggest is you all go to the bakery or you bake some cookies yourself or a pie or a cake. And each one of you walk in there with a bakery good and you give it to the congressman and say. Give this to some needy organization in the, in the district that needs it, but we're here to just let you know, we. You're gonna break us and we won't be able to bake things if you cut our social security. I said, that's a nice way of projecting them. That's a great idea. So I don't know if this is gonna happen or not, but there's a lot of, these folks are really very upset about this cutting the social security, cause. Uh, and many of them tell me that's their mainstay of income, that's how they pay their bills and that's how they do. All kinds of stuff and you take that away from them. Or cut it or stop it for a period of time and that's gonna put a real rough. So there, you know, there was a meeting yesterday between the president and the speaker of the house and I don't know what I heard about it, if it was a. Good meeting or bad, I guess they're agreeing to meet again. But just, I just wanted to put you all on alert that. Uh, something may happen, it won't have anything to do with us. Uh, we'll just be friendly, we don't have a congressman in town anymore. So I don't have to have the police department all juiced up about charging over there because. I had the Speaker of the House here and we had to mobilize the boys and girls fifty-seven times. During Hester's Day when people were laying in the street and handcuffing themselves to the furniture and spraying stuff on the windows and. All kinds of stuff, so we're not gonna get that. And these are all older, nice senior citizens, but. I, I empathize with them, they're really very concerned about losing that money if, if this, if Congress. Shuts the place down and we can't send out the social security checks in the next month.
I would say much of that came before the twenty-four hour news cycle and, and your honor would appreciate this. What I typically would tell people in that demographic is whenever Fox News does that, just change the channel.
I'm not arguing anything about that.
Just change the channel, cause it's not true. We, we've, we've had so many of these debt crises. They have absolutely stepped up their, their fear coverage this cycle. It's, it's been pretty terrifying, but. Change the channel, that's not true.
I've got three quick others. Um. One pertaining to, I've had a thought about the flagpole, since we changed the ordinance. And then the last, what, two years to accommodate like bell tire having a taller pole. Maybe we add, think about it, uh, doing a taller pole, that way we can put the American and the state flag on one and then have two rotating ones. To help with the two flags on one pole thing. It's a good discussion maybe to have. Um. Second was, um. Probably trying to revisit the Millview and thirty-one crossing, um. Believe there was a pretty bad accident, someone had to be airlifted today, don't know the results of it, but um. That's something that continually comes up and I have stopped going that, that way with my kids, cause it's pretty dangerous.
It is one of the areas that the road diet will be. So that, that is an, a future improvement that is planned there and should help because it will. Prevent people from having to cross four lanes of traffic. They'll only have to cross one lane, there'll be a refuge in the middle and they can. Cross the other lane, although I have, I'm not privy to what the circumstances of this particular case were. But in, in, in any case, it will become a much safer crossing under a road diet than it is today.
I think a lot of us that are riding bikes with our kids, we, we like going to the prairie path to get up and down, it's much easier, but it's. That one little section of trying to get, uh, you know, an eight, a five and a three-year-old cross Millview.
I would join you. I know that even if the road diet happens, it will be many years before we see a safer intersection. So I would join you in requesting a conversation about some temporary implementations that we can do to some of these more dangerous.
I know that's a state route, so that's gonna be an I dot.
And that's still a conversation we get to have because we live here.
The other one is.
But one of the things you could do is um, either a tunnel under or a crossing over now.
There's temporary thing, like I'm, I'm thinking temporary implementations for road calming, for visibility, for things that we don't have to do right now. But we should talk about in the future.
Um, last one was, can we revisit um, our discussion about the city's power and solar panels? Having the discussion, I know there's a lot of people waiting in the wings, I think there's some people that do like leases for solar panels.
Are you talking about the city leasing solar panels?
No, like a company that comes in, which people can. Get their panels on their house, then the power goes back to, I don't know.
Is that, is that prevented under our current codes?
Well, I think it's more so the companies don't do it because it's not advantageous because of um, incentives. That come back. To those companies, what I should say.
Okay.
Um, I'll have a, I'll probably have to.
Maybe if you could send me something about it.
Come sit down. I, I've had multiple discussions with companies and some other um, residents that would like to do something like that. But it's, it's been. The companies don't do it because it doesn't provide the incentive that they need, whereas if they did it with comment, they get those incentives, uh, rebates or something like that, but.
I, I'll, and just, uh, you know, I'll, I'll reiterate what Gary always says, the incentive programs are paid for by the ratepayers. So if the utility were to provide incentives for, that would, we'd. Be taking that from the ratepayers in order to provide that for those customers.
I, I've had the experience of people calling me up and wanting to talk about putting solar on their house. And telling me, well, I went out and got three bids and there's a pretty big spread between these three different companies as to how much they're gonna charge. In other words, there's not a, a standard fee, it's depending on, you know, so the, one guy says, why is this one so much cheaper than the others? Are they doing, you know, I said, I don't know, I, we're not into the business here recommending what solar company have, but. There's a lot of, lot of wonderment going on there about whose bid is really the most, the best one to have on your table.
It does definitely come down to labor, but this is definitely an item, if we discuss it again, um. I believe the, the result of the last discussion that we had on it was. It's not something we necessarily want to promote, which is unfortunate because we should be promoting that kind of thing. It does hurt our bottom line and it hurts. If. The math is, is if everybody did it. And I didn't do it, I would have a very expensive electric bill, cause I'm the only guy paying. And I don't wanna pay for prayer today by myself, so I hope y'all would help me out with that bill.
Uh, as for the flagpole, um, we did change the ordinance when we had the um, Flag Day Monument, so if our pole is too short. It would just be a matter of getting a taller pole, so.
I have a question, it's kind of a weird one about that. Why did, is, why did we only have two flagpoles? I mean, can't we just have a third?
You can have as many flagpoles, you can do the United.
That's, that's what I meant, is adding a third one. They had a third flag, that's what I was, that's what I was suggesting.
It looks geometric when you've got them on each side. And you have the one and the other and it was the, uh, the prisoner war and then missing action, that was that other flagpole.
Don't wanna upstage the flight team.
Right. I see a subcommittee, I see a sub.
Uh, Gary has a comment?
Uh, if everyone recalls, we had a discussion about relocating these poles to the front of the building and we decided not to do that. Because of the Flag Day Monument and the Flag Day Monument is incorporating the new poles, so. These poles are gonna disappear when the Flag Day Monument poles are, are finished. That was always my impression, which is why we didn't move these poles to begin with, cause these poles are not in a good spot. I mean, they're, they're. They're the Houston Street flagpoles as opposed to the government center flagpoles.
Uh, just one thing, um, I sent Laura an email earlier in the week, um, as a potential. Of um, the community garden, um. At a community garden location within Batavia at the property on Main Street. Um, one of the questions that she came back to me about was who would manage that? I really don't know, I would check to see what Geneva and St. Charles do, like who owns that property and who manages that, manages that. Um, but they both have property out of Peck Road, so as far as like the distance, people would drive to that. Um, so I, I, I think it's not something where I would expect it to be immediately like this year or next year. But maybe eventually a long-term um, opportunity for us to put a community garden there. Um, to also maybe incorporate, um, you know, food compost year-round. Um, type of thing and use it as a uh, learning center almost, depending on who ends up managing it. But have it as a learning center for people to learn how to garden and then maybe take that back, like they have a plot. And so it's kind of a long, long-term plan, but that, that was what my whole suggestion was and, and idea. Don't expect you, you or Michelle to like turn around this year and do that, but you know, some of those questions, um. Because I have seen, I know that she's had those questions of, why is a community garden in Aurora as opposed to Batavia? So, uh, something to maybe consider and think about. Um, again, I can't remember if the water is there or not, but.
I don't think there is water service out there, is there, Gary?
Not, not immediately available, no. And, and then the other, the St. Charles and the Geneva ones are all by the Park District. They manage those. Those, those facilities.
I think that's more in line with. The types of.
Right, because you have to get in there, you have to till them out, you have to clean them out, if they're not maintaining them, there's.
Yeah.
Work that has to go.
Maybe when the Park District is here on the sixth, we could bring it up to them.
Yeah, I'll put in my utility hat for a second too, the water utility actually owns that property, so that, we'll sell it to you for two hundred thousand dollars to the general.
Hey, I'm thinking of opportunities long-term, again, I'm not expecting it overnight, but. You know, it, it could be something to bring it back in and, you know, fulfill a need. And year-round food scraps. For people.
I'm not sure that it's a matter of just needing a place to dump food scraps. Uh, I think that the, for the facilities that are accepting food scraps are. And that's why they're, you know, the availability of them is, is not everywhere. and that's why they're, you know, the availability of them is, is not everywhere. And so it would probably be the investment in the technology needed to manage a food scrap 24 or 12-month program with, we would have to look at that.
At my house.
Yeah, it could be a subscription thing that people have to opt into. They get to pay a fee to participate. Um, we've explored that at my work for certain residents and at my work, we accept all of the city of Naperville's, uh, leaves every year that they collect as compost. So there's certainly ways to use it and do it. It is a big investment in time and expertise.
I think it's a good start in, um, as of a conversation for into the future and planning.
Also, any others?
Dan, this is Alan.
Good.
Just a quick observation. Um, I happened to actually be out of the house in downtown on Saturday and got to spend some time just observing down at the farmer's market. That was just overwhelmed, I think, with people this weekend for an opening weekend was pretty amazing. Um, but I had the chance to kind of sit in a hooded sweatshirt behind the police department tent that I was down there. And I have to say, the interactions that I watched, um, between the police department, the little kids, um, just the general public, a lot of seniors came up with questions, I think, for the, the two officers were, were there and just, it was a really amazing thing to watch the interaction with our officers that were there. Um, granted, they had coffee that was available. Um, but it was, it was a really good thing. It made me really proud to watch that department and their interaction with the public on, on that Saturday morning was pretty amazing. And I just wanted to let everybody know what I saw.
I've heard from a, a few other members of the community too, that they really liked seeing the officers out there at the farmer's market. You know, it was really nice interactions. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
And also any others? Uh, Alan, I guess I would say this, but, um, I'm happy to have you on the line here. Um, I have a new respect for your facilitation of, uh, these meetings. Uh, and I, I have another, I am critical of myself, uh, in terms of facilitation and I, I definitely try to get better. I'm at it aside from, you know, getting here with like a minute or 30 seconds to spare. Um, I'm not sure if all of you knows, I did have neck surgery, uh, about eight years ago. I had a repeat of that surgery, uh, about, uh, a year ago that causes me to, um, have a little bit of a neuropathy issue here. And also, um, it's difficult for me to turn my neck. I forget sometimes and I do this and it hurts. So for a couple of days afterwards, um, I'm trying my, my best to call on people and I notice this meeting, people that will say, Dan, or I get fed by, by Laura, hey, so-and-so has a question. Um, I'm trying my best to, to make sure I include everybody. So if I'm not being fair, please by all means just say Dan and I'll treat that like, like a hand, uh, in an interest of, of trying to be as, as fair as, as I can. Okay. Thank you very much for that. If there's, uh, nothing else on our other, uh, uh, we are going to go to executive session. Can we, uh, get a voice on or?
Absolutely.
Motion on that. I, I remember we go into, uh, uh, executive session to discuss.
Coming out of executive session.
Second.
Motion of the second. All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed?
Okay.
Move to executive session.